Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to first start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On behalf of the North Branford Board of Education, the administrative team and all staff members, I'd like to open this meeting by thanking all parents and guardians for your patience and understanding as we navigate through the many changes we are facing as educators. Please remember that the information and answers to questions provided this evening are reflective of current information, guidelines and requirements handed down through the Commissioner of Education and Governor Lamont. As we endeavor to move through the reopening process, it will be important for us to be flexible and remain current with regards to changes in requirements. Welcome to our town hall meeting. We're hoping that we can have a series of these meetings as we get towards our opening of the school year. It is important, as I mentioned, that we remain flexible and current with regards to changes in these ever-changing requirements. I'd like to begin this meeting by introducing members of our panel. Tracy Wooton, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, is here this evening. Carter Welch, who is our COVID-19 Health and Safety Compliance Liaison and Principal of Tuckett Valley Elementary School. Cindy Teroli is here. She's our Nursing Supervisor for the North Branford Public Schools. And Bill Chody, our Supervisor of Building and Operations, is also here with us as well. As we begin our session this evening, I'd like to clearly state that the goal of the North Branford Public Schools to open the 2021 school year is with all students safely returning to a full-day, full-week program. That being said, we'll discuss other options and plans that we've submitted to the state, and we'll walk you through a series of questions that have come in via the email over the last several days. Topics we will cover this evening will include transportation, the state plan that we submitted, and building-based plans, curriculum and instruction, technology and distance learning, special education, building, cleaning and sanitizing, health and well-being, and any increased or improvement in communication as we move forward from this evening. With that being said, I'm going to start with just a transportation update. I had the opportunity to meet this morning with DATCO and walk through some of their procedures and policies. And they presented a detailed document for guidelines that all buses will be following all drivers. I assure you that they are vigilant in their efforts to make sure that all buses are safe and sanitized at the beginning of every run and at the end of every day and in between as we run our tiered busing system. All drivers will be in masks. There will be a separation area in the front of the bus. They will be boarding students from the rear of the bus and exiting from the front of the bus. It will be a systematic approach that will be consistent from pre-K all the way through grade 12. Our early results from some of our data shows that up to 40% of parents that were polled will not be taking part in the busing. They will be providing transportation for their children, which will allow for additional seating on buses or more space, as we should say. So we feel that we will have ample room for some distancing on the buses. Okay, as you recall, that was one of the things that we were waiting on, and then the state released that the guidelines would be lessened for the rules for transporting students on the bus. That being said, we're going to go over, turn over to our PowerPoint, and we'll start our presentation.
So when we could begin this evening, we're going to speak about the plan that we submitted to the state on Friday, July 24. The plan required that we submitted three different scenarios. One where it was 100%, full day, full week, full in-person instruction available. The other is a hybrid, which would involve remote or distance learning as well as in-person learning. And the third is a completely 100% distance learning scenario. In building these plans, we had several priorities that we considered in order to allocate our resources. With health and safety above all else, student learning, social emotional well-being of students and staff, access to technology, distance learning, and communication of collaboration. One of the first plans that we worked on as a district was what the state considers to be the low-level response plan. This is what all districts are expected to move into in September or late August. It is the low level, meaning that there is very low levels of transmission within the state and within each of our communities. The school district will start to institute instruction as it did prior to spring of 2020, meaning that our classes will go back to as they were before distance learning and COVID-19, with the exception of a few different areas. In order to reduce the possibility of transmission, K-8 will be using a cohorting system in which children are together for at least 80% of the day, meaning the same group of children work together and travel together within the school day to different activities. Another consideration is electives and specials. So for instance, PE class, if weather is permitting, will be outside. Band and chorus, proven to be areas that might be considered more susceptible to transmission, will be given priority in terms of spacing of students as well as larger spaces to conduct, as well as outdoors if possible. Instruction, we recognize that there will be a mitigation that must go through in order to support students and possibly a diagnostic type of set of assessments to help students and meet them where they are in their learning, particularly based on what happened during the spring, to make sure that students have everything that they need and are ready to move forward with instruction. So we will provide support and remediation as well as on-grade level instruction. Assessment as well as diagnostic will eventually start to move into assessments that are warranted by the state and directed by the state, as well as formative assessments that are used within the class to make sure that students are understanding and able to keep up with what we're doing. Grading will be as it was prior to the spring of 2020. So every student in the elementary schools will receive a standards-based report card. Students in 612 will receive letter grades based on assessment and activities in class. The state has also required that we provide choice to families and parents during the 100% full-day in-person instruction. The choices are to attend school, to opt out into a remote learning or distance learning model, or to homeschool your child. So the homeschooling piece is one of the more straightforward pieces. It means that you are withdrawing your son or daughter or students from the school district, meaning that the school district will in no way provide support to the learning of that child. The other choice, the opt-out distance learning instruction, is a little more complicated. So we will ensure that students and parents are aware of the curriculum and what is being taught and will provide support as needed and as possible by our instructional staff. This is very dependent upon how many students we have in distance learning, as well as staffing and other human resource allocations. So one of the things that we will talk about when we talk about opting out for remote learning is a commitment from parents. We are asking that the commitment be a marking period or 45 days in order for us to allocate the correct human resources and to make sure that every student's needs are met. In this opt-out distance learning model, attendance will be taken. There will be curriculum instruction, assessment and grading identical in most cases to what's going on in the classroom for the students' counterparts that are attending in person. There will be a level of support, again, dependent upon the resources we have, and there will be both synchronous and asynchronous learning, meaning both live and remote or videoed learning. The state has suggested that parents who do opt for remote learning become involved in the Connecticut Learning Hub to support their children in addition to the school resources. The second model, or the second scenario we address, is a moderate-level response. This is the hybrid that you may have heard about. Schools must operate at approximately 50% reduced capacity. North Branford is considering several options at this time. One of the options or possibilities is that there will be 50% of students in class two days a week, the other 50%, the two days of the week, and then one day everyone will be distance learning. It is likely that we will do this by categorizing alphabetically and ensuring that all students have access to teaching that's going on in classrooms to the best of our ability. The other option is to prioritize our youngest learners. This would come with some direction from the state to ensure that our K-6 students are learning in an atmosphere that is research-based and evidence-based. And our older learners, our grades seven through 12, who are more capable of directing their own learning, having a majority of the instruction be online or distant learning. The third level, the high-level response, is our distance learning plan. In this case, schools will be closed. There will be no transportation, and extracurricular activities, including sports, will be suspended. This will be similar to our plan that we implemented during the spring, which is distance learning 2.0. This will be distance learning 3.0, and it will involve a more rigorous and comprehensive set of instructions and activities, as well as additional live teaching. We expect teaching to be at approximately 50% or more to be synchronous or live, with the other 50% or less being asynchronous and students working. In order to successfully implement our remote learning plan, the technology must be capable of supporting this type of model. We are very fortunate at North Branford that we are able to do this. We were able to do this, for the most part, as of last spring, and continue to support students with Chromebooks, as well as MacBooks and iPads, ensuring all students pre-K12 have access and access to technology in order to succeed. The high school and middle school students will have Chromebooks that they take home each evening. Grades three through five will be assigned Chromebooks for in-school use and will be available for home use if the district moves away from in-person, full-time learning. There will be technology available to K, pre-K, to students, and we will continue to provide hotspots to those people and families in need. Some of the resources for our distance learning plan include Google Classroom, Seesaw, Screencastify, Learning Ally, EdPuzzle, and Achieve 3000. There will be support for both families, students and staff to be successful while using distance learning. As we did in the spring, we will provide students, families and staff with tutorials, videos. There will be literature, as well as sites and links to support the use of all of these programs and to help teachers and students learn how to use everything that we will have accessible for them. So what we're trying to do is make sure that our priorities are met. Safety and welfare being our number-one priority, and then curriculum and instruction, and moving on to make sure that everyone is, both their physical, emotional, as well as intellectual well-being is the best that we can help them support. One of the biggest things that coming back in person is that our buildings are ready and that the schools are ready to have our students back full-time. In order to do this, each building submitted a plan to the district, which in turn was supported and provided to the state. These plans provide for many of the aspects that would otherwise not be able to be met without some extensive planning and resources devoted to them. So Dr. Welch will begin to speak to some of the plans.
So first of all, it's my pleasure to be here. Obviously, I know that parents, guardians have many questions, concerns regarding reopening of schools. And I value and appreciate that role as a parent myself, as the principal of an elementary school, and then in my role as kind of a health and safety liaison for the district. That said, I appreciate the thoughtful questions that have been sent to me already. They certainly are helping us to continue to frame and adjust plans that are living, breathing documents as we continue to get new guidance. We know there are a lot of concerns and anxieties out there. So knowing that from parents and receiving that information from guardians helps us continue to address it, change our plans, adjust to your needs, and continuing to get your feedback through forums like this, surveys, and even just some parent advisory groups that we have planned, will continue to help us build really strong plans. So building-based, I think the way to think about that is really getting at the details of, you know, what your child will be experiencing when they come back to school, because it's going to look very different than a reopening plan. So some of the things that, you know, I want to address with you and give you some brief ideas about, I'll highlight here for you, but I want you to know that every building principal will make available to you their building plan, kind of an executive summary, statements, so that you know what to expect for each building. And there'll be a lot of commonality across the district, obviously. So some of the things that we'll have to make adjustments to and we'll have to change to allow for our social distancing and cohorting model that Mrs. Wooton spoke about involve things like arrival and dismissal. So our typical arrival and dismissal procedures will look different this year. We're going to need to stagger times. We're going to need to really have, take a lot more time getting kids into the building safely, moving them in a way that continues to be socially distant, and allowing for less of the kids to come into the building at once than you may be typically used to, whether that's through parent drop-off or bus procedures. So you'll get full details on what that looks like by building, including a staggering of times. I know that's concerning, particularly if you have more than one children in one building or two buildings. Staff, principals will make exception for that. And if you have, you know, a third grade and a fifth grade staggered time, we'll allow you to drop off at one time and won't expect you to do that twice. So again, those details will be shared with you. Related to lunch and recess, at the, I would say, pre-K through eighth-grade level, lunch will be, again, very much the cohort type of model, whereas in the high school, they're going to do some larger-space lunches with smaller groups. So I think me starting to give you some details, you're going to see that what's good for elementary and secondary are different, and the way that we arrange that will look different by school, and again, you'll get those details. But at the elementary level, students will be eating lunch in their classrooms with their small cohort. And we're really looking to protect that cohort, K through five, those 20 kids staying together. Oh, sure. Related to recess at the elementary level, we continue to plan for recess. It will look different. It will be socially distanced. We'll keep the cohort model in place. So kids won't be interacting as they did in the past, where different classrooms would come together and experience a social time together. That's just, that won't be part of the plan, but they will have their outdoor physical activity. I know ventilation and airflow is a concern. That was one that came through loud and clear through parent and guardian questions coming to me, but also, I think, just by nature of having two older buildings in the district. So related to that, I want you to know that we have addressed air conditioning and made plans for that to be in place in all buildings in some capacity. The airflow has been addressed and evaluated. Bill Chody has spoken with me. He's looked into that. The buildings have been tested for airflow quality, and the exhaust fans are up and running and will be running more so than they have in the past. Airflow filters, HEPA filters, will be changed on a more consistent basis than they have in the past to, again, allow for that high-quality airflow to remain in the buildings. We will be having the doors to the classrooms open into the hallways, and we will be having the windows open to keep that fresh airflow. So obviously, we know that that poses some, that butts up against what we would do for security, for example, in some of our lockdown procedures, but to have a socially-distanced, safe-as-we-can environment, we have to kind of balance some of those needs. So again, those, building-based, will be shared with you, but every building is addressing the quality of airflow and putting plans in place to make sure that fresh air is being transmitted and flowing throughout the building. A lot of time will be spent planning and almost micromanaging transitions in the building to, again, keep that socially-distanced and cohorting models in place. And again, at the secondary level, to decrease the amount of time that you have cross-contamination appears or large group gatherings in the hallways. So we're really going to try to change the way that we're having kids move about during the day and limit the time that we have large groups moving together. Unfortunately, buildings, due to just limiting exposure to unknowns, the visitors to the buildings will be very limited. It will be kind of a no visitor policy in the schools. And parents, guardians coming into the schools that we used to embrace and open the doors to, we won't be able to do the way that school is looking. So it'll really be just the staff and the students together and without a really specific, important reason coming into the school. It won't be something that will be part of the fall. Cleaning and sanitizing, that's another question that we've gotten a lot from parents and guardians, and rightly so. That's certainly a major concern. Cleaning procedures are dictated in all building plans, so those will be shared with you. But across the district, custodians have extra responsibilities and duties. There's an increase in the afternoon custodian shift to come in earlier to help with the clean that needs to be done while students are in place. We've added, through some creative grants and support from the board, a sanitizing position in each building, which will be a new hire that will come in while the students are there and will sanitize throughout the building and spray and wipe down common surfaces and high-touch areas and be available when kids move from one room to sanitize before another group were to come in. So those are important parts and procedures, and we'll define those by building. There'll be a lot more expectation for staff to support with wiping and cleaning. We have an all-hands-on-deck kind of approach. We know that it's important, just like you know in your homes, to try to limit any kind of spread and wiping down. That's something that will be part of regular business in school now. We have ordered all kinds of new supplies to support and assist with that, including building-based, district-based purchases to support those methods. Related to illness, I know that's another common question. What do we do if someone gets COVID? And if it comes down, what happens? So we have plans in place by building, and of course, commonality across the district for how to report those absences for families and asking for additional information of the types of symptoms, and obviously, if there was a positive case. And then we will monitor. We will do contact tracing as well. And then we have a containment plan that's in place. It's by the state guideline. Every building has an isolation room for a kid that, any student that might come down with COVID-related symptoms. The nurse is very much involved in that process, and the student would be placed in a containment room until they're able to be picked up. Related to temperature checks, that's something that we're expecting our families to do at home to monitor. And Scott has a nice plan in place to help and support with that, with some resources that the district has available. But we would have communication, again, with the school nurse if we had reason to believe in the classroom, like you would in the past, that a student comes down not feeling well, a student feels like they might have a fever, then we would put a plan in place where there would be communication with the family and whether the containment room or the nurse's office was used would be in place. If there is a positive case, we would put into place a plan where there would be communication with those families involved in that child's classroom or close contact with. The state has some guidelines that are out there that we're kind of adjusting to fit to our local needs and obviously consulting with ESHO Health with their very close proximity to us and knowing what our plans and environmental, how we're doing in the community. So that's something that we know is very important. As, you know, I kind of mentioned, I have the fortunate benefit to be working with Mrs. Terolo as our school nurse, who's also the district nursing supervisor. I'll say to you that she has worked extremely hard communicating with all the buildings, communicating across with stakeholders, just having, you know, really her summer, really involved in this process to make sure that, you know, we're communicating with families, to make sure that we have plans in place that address student and family needs and that we're responding and ready to face whatever change to those guidelines or to student health that we face. Also around the building plans, the last thing I want to kind of mention there is each building does have a COVID team in place that is meeting on a regular basis and talking about their own building and what kind of their needs are for students and what family needs are. And those teams will meet on a regular basis and kind of brainstorm as things come up. And that's something in place across the district. If we can, we'll switch to the next slide, which is really...
I'm sorry, before we do, just a couple of keynotes. When we talk about distancing and spacing and accessing all four buildings, we're looking to use our large teaching spaces or large spaces in each building, the gymnasium, our shared auditorium, the cafeteria, to be instructional places as well. I'm also looking at renting six tents that we will put at each building, two at the elementary buildings, and then probably one at the high school, one at the middle school. And we're going to look to set up two stations where, obviously, in September and October, we can get students outside with frequency, get many breaks throughout the day, mask breaks, that we'll probably be calling them, but getting them out where we could have a full classroom underneath a tent and rotate through and do other types of activities where they'd be engaged and outdoors and help with some of the spacing issues. As for the ventilation, Dr. Welch spoke to, you know, the age of a couple of the buildings and what some of our challenges are. At TBS, we're ordering, I believe, seven classroom air conditioning units for the windows. So all classrooms at TBS will have window units within them. At the high school, a large percentage already have window units. And the one good thing about the window units is that they're taking outside air, circulating it into the classroom, and it's not recirculating again. That's the biggest concern with the other buildings. So at NBIS, we're looking at the use of UV rays in our unit on a roof, Mr. Chody?
Yes.
Which will assist in killing any germs as we recycle the air back through the middle school. The challenge at Jerome Harrison, it's a different heating and cooling unit. So we're going to look to change those HEPA filters much more frequently than we've done in the past to stay on top of that. So not only classroom units, but the unit itself, the chiller unit itself. So we're doing everything we can to try to get as much airflow within the buildings, as Dr. Welch stated. We are going to deviate slightly from our security plan. We usually teach with doors closed and locked. In those first two months, in the warm seasons especially, the windows will be open. We're looking to keep the doors locked but open. We're going to turn on the overhead ventilation systems in the buildings and allow for air to continuously circulate and move throughout and get out of the building. So that's our, that's our plan right now. We're working with a couple of different companies to come in and assist us with that to better utilize our heating and cooling systems. I think cleaning and sanitizing, before we just go on to that, Dr. Welch touched on that. We're going to have four additional staff members brought in for a full day. They will be sanitizing buildings throughout the day. So their sole responsibility will be to wipe down and clean flat areas, surfaces, assist with bathroom cleanings, doorknobs, tabletops. We will then look to changing our second shift of custodial staff to come in earlier. And our daytime custodians will be charged with being out and visible throughout the entire day actively cleaning. So at the midpoint of each day in every building, there should be four people just cleaning throughout during the day. Okay, so when you look at the traditional typical day, we have one-day custodian. We'll have four now midway through the day. The second shift will stay on later. We'll close and exit from kindergarten through sixth grade by 3:00 or when we clear elementary. There will be no activities after school. They will go into our deep clean. The high school will then shut at 5:00. There will be no activities in the buildings after 5:00. We'll deep clean. We've purchased a number of the backpack fogging machines. We have two per building. So the majority of the evening, those nights, will be for those deep cleaning situations. We've spent a great deal of time and energy, and I commend Bill Chody for his efforts to make sure that we have the tools necessary to really clean. to make sure that we have the tools necessary to really clean that space. We feel that we do have inadequate enough of square footage for our enrollment sizes. We are different than other schools that are around our towns, I should say, that around us with our population of just over 500 at the high school. We feel with our square footage and our ability to use that additional space within, that we can spread and distance and work with our staff and students in a safe manner. We'll move on.
Yeah. Next slide, so getting at some of the staff and student safety procedures and things that we have in place across the district. One, obviously you've heard this, it's a state requirement, the facial masks or facial coverings. That's something that we'll have in place, that's our, you know, consistent for any adult or student in building. So we'll spend a lot of time supporting you with that effort, educating kids why it's necessary, sending you information by building that's age appropriate on why we wear masks, how to use masks, with staff that kids are familiar with talking about the use of masks. So we will be getting that stuff to you as we're closer to our opening date so that students who are going to be coming back to a new way of school, social distancing, masks, cohorting, will understand those processes. Hygiene is a big important one, so there's going to be more time lost from instruction, but to help with kids sanitizing hands, hand washing, building plans have built those times in and scheduled them so that they are occurring on a regular basis, particularly at the elementary level where we have to manage those transitions, ensuring that that happens before lunch and multiple times throughout the day. Kids will sanitize when they come into the building in the morning as well at the main entrances. Social distancing when possible, so we'll explain that by building level and it will look slightly different, as I mentioned, secondary versus elementary. I know a lot of the guidelines are coming out, the recommendation of six feet from CDC, if you go for the American Academy of Pediatrics, they talk about three feet. I think by building and by place and by time, that will look differently. But I won't say here tonight that we will be able to achieve the six-foot social distance at all times throughout the day. That simply won't be possible, but we will do our best with our classroom arrangements, with our transitions, the way that every administrator is working hard with their teams to plan and meet those needs to the best of their ability with a full reopening plan in place.
Right, I want to, I want to jump in there. With the six-foot distancing, I'm sure you are aware, we are going back to school on September 8th. We had moved the date out, the state allowed us to cut the academic year to 177 days and they gave us three days to work in preparation. So there'll be five professional development days for staff prior to the opening of school on September 8th. And in those five days, three days will be dedicated to working with our teachers to make sure that we've maximized the ability for them to distance children. So they're going to come in prior to that time, they're going to look at their classrooms, they're going to look at anything that we can remove that doesn't need to be in the classrooms and we'll put things into storage, which we've rented, so that we have the optimal ability to, to spread students within. I cannot guarantee six feet in every classroom. Kids are going to get on the bus, they're going to be within six feet of each other. Obviously, there's going to be many situations throughout where they're going to end up in a hallway, in passing or in stairwell. We're going to do our best, but it's important that we, we put it out there that I don't think it's realistic to think that at all times they're going to be six feet apart.
I think one of the things that buildings are doing and spending a lot of time on are classroom arrangements. So staff, administrators, school teams are looking at the way that we've designed classrooms in the past. At the elementary level, you know, we've spent a lot of effort on flexible seating and arrangements that are really engaging for students and the way that we instruct now. Those will look different. We'll, we'll be back in more of a traditional-looking classroom to try to maximize the social distancing space and to keep all students facing in the same direction and to keep the most space you can keep between kids while still giving the teacher room to teach and be in front of the room. And that will present more challenges in some buildings where there's smaller classroom footage and less challenges in other places where there's more space and there's the ability to spread out more. But every classroom is looking at that and getting rid of some non-essential materials in the class to allow more space for that social distancing to happen. So the cohort model, again, you've heard that over and over, that's really important. That's one of the best practices that we know to reduce the spread. Kids are with the same kids and they're not intermingling and having so many contacts with other kids. So we're going to look to preserve that to the best of our ability throughout the day and support that with our transitions as we talked about in the schedule. I mentioned the, really managing the times that kids are in the hallway to reduce that, so that's something that will happen. Again, that will look different, K through 12, and your building administrators will share more of those building-based details with you. I think illness and accessing the school nurse is something that we've talked about. We're going to change that process too. There'll be more visits from the school nurse to the classroom, more communication with the classroom teacher to the school nurse via phone to try to limit the amount of time and exposure that students are coming down to the nurse's office or a student who's not really sick entering into a nurse's office where there might be a sick child. So we'll work closely with families so that they understand those processes and classroom teachers as well as the school nurses, who again, have been excellent in terms of their planning and thinking about this so that we're ready and prepared. Scott did mention the outdoor spaces, so we've really looked at all buildings to expand those opportunities to be outside as much as we can where there's fresh air, to give students mask breaks. Mask breaks at the elementary level are planned on a daily basis, so good weather, bad weather, that's happening no matter what. Kids are going to get outside and have time to get their masks off beyond just lunch and recess. We know that's important to expect them to be in a mask so much. But the outside instructional spaces, we've had our classroom teachers thinking about ways to do that, we have our specials teachers thinking about ways to do that, and we're creating spaces for them to do that. So we're really going to maximize that effort, knowing how important it is, that fresh air. Next slide, if you will. Related to special education, there were some parent questions that came in about that, and I think just to highlight right off the bat, as always, it's our responsibility to conduct the PPT process and to fulfill our IEP obligation, so every building will continue to do that with their school teams and through the process that's collaborative with parents. As you know, in the spring, a lot of that process was virtual and that will probably continue in the fall as the way that we meet and conduct our business. But it's still the same collaborative process with input from families, with input from the school teams. We'll have some flexibility in the way that we deliver services, again, around the practices that I've talked about, that social distancing, that cohorting, the use of masks. We'll have plans in place that will meet the individual needs of students, whatever those may be, whether related to masks, whether they're related to behavior, whether they're related to academics, social needs, whatever they are, our school teams are ready and willing to meet those needs and will be flexible and collaborative in their approach at all times to make sure that happens. I think parents of students that have, kids with IEP should know that upfront, that our, we're not planning to make the school experience look different for those kids. We want it to be the same inclusion model where those students are interacting, they're part of their classroom. If they're in a life skills program, they're still a part of their classroom. Their life skills arrangement might look differently, they might have different accommodations in place, but they're still an included and valued member of our school environment in all cases. And then just know that you'll have that same ongoing support from your case manager, administrator, whoever it is working with you through the PPT process and with those students. And I encourage you, if you have concerns individually, to reach out to those people at the building level so that we can help brainstorm ahead of time and communicate with you. And then I think if we move on from that one, really, you know, an important need, and I know the TBS community, the staff and the students hear this from me a lot, and I know Scott has said it, and I think we all believe it, that need for social, emotional attention and effort from all of us is really critical this year as we come back to school. And I think we think about that in terms of students, we think about that in terms of families, and we think about that in terms of staff. So if we break it down to kind of a pre-entry, an entry and a post-entry model, what that looks like, we're thinking in our buildings for new students, students transitioning to buildings, about what kind of orientation process we can have. So those will be obviously modified from the traditional orientation process, but we still will, by building, hold a process, whether virtual, whether in person in small groups. And I think depending on the state guidelines and how those might change, we'll determine what that looks like. But your building administrators will, will communicate with you and ensure that those are, are happening and if they, even if they're in small tours, that's something that we're open to as well. We are all on hand as administrators, as a school staff, ready and willing to help students and families in need with whatever issues, questions, anxieties or concerns that they're having. And I can't urge parents, guardians enough to reach out if you're concerned. I know I'm getting a lot of concerns district-wide, building-based, and I'm sure other administrators are too, and that's important for us to know, not only so that we can do our jobs better, but so that you can feel comforted with your concerns and anxieties that you're being heard and that they're getting thoughtful responses to your questions and concerns. We will continue to have staff and student training. So as Scott mentioned, there's PD day time for our staff to be trained on how we're doing school this new way, and we'll have videos and resources shared with you by building for students on how we're doing school these new ways. I think when you think about entering school, every administrator has been really thoughtful about a delivery of kind of social, emotional learning expectations and scheduling out time for that to occur on a regular basis within their schedule, knowing that kids will have feelings, anxieties, concerns and emotions that will need expressing in school and that knowing, building community, working together, getting that trusting relationship is critically important to our success going forward, whether we're in full school mode, hybrid mode or distance learning mode. So that's a really important investment on our part upfront to make sure that kids are feeling connected to their school, to their classrooms, to their teacher and to the staff, and we'll spend a lot of time on that. We're working hard to support faculty, so our faculty are, our parents, like all of you, they have kids returning to school, they're, they're having a lot of anxieties and concerns about, okay, so my school might be on this day, but my homeschool or my kids are going might have a different model. How am I going to game plan that? How am I going to be available for my own family and for my, my job as a teacher? So those are things we want to help staff with. We want to give staff an opportunity to vent and to share concerns and to talk through and process emotions. That's really important and we want to model as adults for students that we're doing that, that we're all concerned and we're all processing emotions of unknown and uncertainty and concern, and it's, it's not perfect and it's not going to be 100% safe and it's going to look very different, but we're all going to work on that together and be open with our communications. And then I think after the entry plan, it's continuing to support students. If we're seeing students who are high anxiety or high concern or high need or we're hearing that from families, we're going to put plans in place to support those students. And we're going to support families with their ongoing concerns, again, through surveying, through forum opportunities and whatever it is that each building sets up with their stakeholders, that's an important process. And we're going to continue to develop and support our staff with what they're facing and what their needs are. If, if there's more needs academically, if there's more needs socially, emotionally, if there's more needs for their own mental health, whatever that is, we have to be ready to respond and to do that. And then I think lastly, that communication piece is really important. I think as parents, you've probably been somewhat concerned, anxious, frustrated that you haven't gotten a huge amount of communication yet. And I think just being patient with us as a district and as teams to really put thoughtful plans in place, to think, collaborate, and now that you're going to get more of that information, you're going to have the opportunity to provide more feedback. We'll be surveyed again and have more informed decision-making capacity because you'll know kind of some of the details that you didn't know before so that you can make decisions and, and get more questions and information to us. So this is an ongoing communication loop. It's really important for us as buildings and as a, as a team up here, that we maintain that open style with you and that you maintain that with us. And I think, you know, those are the major highlights from PowerPoint, and we tried to organize the PowerPoint around a lot of the questions that were coming to us. Again, the district priorities that we've worked on, the common language that you'll see in the building plans. And then I think part of our next task is to kind of go into some of the questions and answer some of the things that are coming in from parents. But before we do that, I don't know if anyone else on the panel wanted to jump in or add anything, and then we can kind of start with some of the questions.
I just, I do want to echo the, the last piece that we just shared with the social, emotional wellbeing. The first several weeks, obviously, as we transition back in are going to look very different. On September 8th, if we are able to go back and we are in school for a live model, it will have been six months since March 13th that our kids have been away from, from their peers and their teachers and their schools. That's, that's a long time. There's going to be many coming back with a great deal of fear and apprehension and those are the things that we're going to focus on. We're going to go back and have to reteach and see where children are at, and we're going to spend a great deal of time making sure that we have a good gauge moving forward as we, as we adjust as a faculty as well. I'm asking you to be patient, knowing that two weeks ago, it was full steam ahead, we're all going back and in last night's governor's meeting on air, there was talk of, you know, hybrids and local districts being able to do things differently, and those are the types of things that make us very concerned. We like consistency, we want consistency, we want to know, and we want to bring our children back in a, in a safe manner and our staff back in a safe manner, and that's our highest priority. We've been planning, we continue to plan for our opening on September 8th, and we're using the CDC guidelines and East Shore Health Department's recommendations along with Dr. Knofal, our, Dr. Knofal, our medical advisor, his advice and coming up with plans and strategies on a daily basis. That could change tomorrow. There could be announcement tomorrow that all bets are off and this is going to happen. Connecticut is somewhat unique in that it has done a remarkable job dealing with this pandemic. If you track data and you see what's happening in other states around the country in comparison to what's happening in Connecticut, we've, we've done a great job and we're all to be commended for that. That being said, a lot of the information that you're seeing and hearing is the importance of getting our children back into school and back acclimated and, and back around their peer groups and, and they're adults. So that being said, I want to, I want to ask Cindy Trolle, if there's anything, this is going to be a big part of it, and I do want to acknowledge our nursing supervisor for the amount of time and energy that has been spent this summer, not only fielding questions, but making sure that all of our buildings are up to par with the requirements as, as we move towards that first day. We're five weeks away from our start. That seems like, oh my gosh, that's a, that's a long, it's going to be here before we know it. Once August 1st, that you know as a parent what that means with having children and getting ready and going back to school. Carter alluded to before about, you know, having parents assist with, you know, temperature taking. We're not going to take temperatures outside of the school building with everything that we have going on with staggering times and getting children off a bus and having what we're expecting to have with more parents driving and dropping. We're going to have to really manage how we do that. To stop and take 500 temperatures each day outside of a schoolhouse is not recommended at this point by CDC. What we're looking to do is I have 500 thermometers that were donated to us by East Shore Health. Within the next week, we'll put something out and parents that are in need of a thermometer will have the ability to come by and get a free thermometer to have at home, and we're asking that parents take their children's temperature. If, if you feel there's a need or you want to get in the good habit of doing it each day before they go, to do that and then keep them home. The nurses are going to be really busy with some of the protocols that they're going to have to follow. And you know, we're going into flu season as we get back into school, we know the allergy season, we know that kids, there's, you know, many things that happen in the schoolhouse throughout the day where our, our nurses are very busy. That's on top of what we're dealing with now. So we're going to need a lot of cooperation and a lot of support from our parents on the home front to assist us. So that being said...
Yes, I do have a couple of kind of housekeeping things I'd like to put out there. In regards to temperatures, we are still sticking with 100 degrees. That is what we consider a fever, which is not unusual from our normal practice, but if your child has a fever of 100, we do ask that you keep them home until they're fever-free for 24 hours without any medication. In other words, no Tylenol, no Ibuprofen. That is not any different than our past procedures. Also, being that we only have about five or six more weeks before school, I implore you to find a mask that your child likes. If you're going to use a fabric mask, I would suggest you have two, something that you can wash because we want you to be sure that you're washing them weekly. Find something that they like, encourage them to pick it out, they're going to be wearing it for a long time during the day. So to all of a sudden say, okay, not only is it time to go back to school when you haven't been to school since March, but now you have to wear a face mask all day long. And of course, breaks will be given on a regular basis and as needed, but they need to be comfortable in those masks. It's difficult. We as adults are having a hard time wearing them, so can you imagine a young child or even a teenager having to wear it all the time? So if that's something you can start working on now, getting, whether it's a surgical mask, you know, just the kind of blue with the loops on them, or the kind of fancy fabric ones you can find, I encourage you to start doing that now. As far as reporting illness, we are going to be very clear, as we've done with the flu, about asking... about asking you to be specific about your child's symptoms when you call in. This will be kept private, but I know you're used to doing that. We've left messages on the voicemails, and when you call and speak to a secretary, we would ask you, do you have a fever? Do you have a cough? We started doing that before school got out. We do that with flu season, and this is going to be reportable, not only to me as a coordinator, but then I report that back to the superintendent, and it will go to East Shore Health. More details will certainly come out, you know, with more information about that, but we would like you to get used to being very specific. And lastly, physicals and immunizations that are due are going to be due in order for your child to attend school. We were not given a grace period by the state. Pediatricians are open, they are doing well, child visits. So if your child requires a physical, now the state of Connecticut only requires a physical for entry into school, so if your child is going to preschool for the first time, he or she does need a physical. After that, it is mandated by our state, and our district adheres to kindergarten, 6th grade, and 10th grade. In those grades, they need to have a physical done. So if they have not, it needs to be done, or they will not be allowed into school. Equally, their immunizations must be kept up to date. I know we sent a letter via email home several weeks ago about that, but just to be clear, we were not given any grace periods, so those need to be done. Most of you probably were contacted by your school nurse before school got out, but getting out so early, kind of, we lost a little time there. So do call your pediatrician if you have a problem, if you need just a little extra time, please contact your school nurse and let them know, and we will work with you to get that done. Lastly, if you are going to be participating in distance learning by your choice, physicals and immunizations still need to be kept up to date, because your child is still our responsibility. You have not withdrawn them from the school district, so they need to be kept up to date. So please don't think that because you've opted to keep them home, that they still don't need a physical or to have their immunizations done, they do. And if you have any questions, just, you know, contact your school nurse, and we can explain further or email me, and I will let you know. Those are, aside from some of the questions that we got, those are just some things I wanted to be sure you're very aware of.
Nurse, about parent pickup being within the 30 minutes that we're really encouraging parents to.
Yep, we're going to ask, of course, that you're taking, as we said, your child's temperature at home, so that we're avoiding as many ill children in the building as possible. Of course, kids get sick, staff get sick in the middle of the day, and they get a fever or any other kind of illness. But in order to get those kids who could potentially have COVID out of the building as quickly as possible, we do ask that you get here quickly to pick them up. A 30-minute window is probably about what we're going to allow. Be sure that your emergency contacts know that, because if we don't get you, we are gonna call them much quicker than we have in the past. So please be accessible. Please be sure that your phone numbers are up to date in the beginning of the school year, and that we can get ahold of you and that you are prepared to come get them quickly. And this information will be provided before school starts in a letter for more detail.
Thank you. Anything else for the PowerPoint, or are we ready for questions?
Ready for questions.
I do have Liz Hoskins here, who is the president of two of our PTO organizations, so I'm very thankful that she's here. I know that she's been fielding questions, our administrative team has been fielding questions, and at this time, we're gonna open those questions up. You do have the ability to go on Facebook Live and send questions in, I believe?
Mr. Williams.
We do. I have Mr. Williams here for my tech department, so he's receiving questions as well. So Ms. Hoskins, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Okay, thank you. Just bear with me, because I know you guys answered a lot of my questions here. The question I was asked the most was, and it's confusing for parents, and I know you guys explained it, I just want to make sure that we all understand it. If a parent opts out of sending their child in person full-time at the beginning of the school, they have two options. One of them is to not enroll them in school and do the homeschool route, or they can do a distance learning model that will be kind of hammered out later on as you get numbers of how many kids. And it'll be supported by staff. Will it be, you know, staff's not gonna be able to do like video lessons anymore, but it will be like provided by staff?
So it really will depend on the number of students that we have home for each grade level, for each course. If there are 30 children, for instance, in grade one that are not attending, then we could devote a teacher to those students, to that group of students. So it would be different. It would be similar to what it was in the spring. However, if we have two children that are out of a biology class that are learning remotely, it would be more likely that we would be trying to either stream live the teacher as their class is going on, which will depend on technology as well as availability, or it would be where the student would have received information from the teacher that is teaching the course with as much support as possible supplemented by the Connecticut Learning Hub. And homeschooling is completely, you are withdrawing, you actually have to go through a formal process of withdrawing your student from the school district. So there is no support from the district at that point.
Okay. We're hearing of a lot of schools right now that are going to distance learning models starting a year off. What would need to happen between now and the next five weeks for our school to decide to go to that model, Scott?
There would have to be a strong recommendation from our health department, East Shore Health. We're monitoring and tracking positive cases, hospitalizations, and the impact in North Branford. So there would have to be something that would dramatically change. When you look at our school population of just over 1,600 students and our ability to equally distant students within the capacity of our buildings, we feel comfortable and confident that we could do that, that the hybrid could create more of a chaotic situation for parents and for students and staff with half of the students home doing virtual learning, the other half in during the day, going every other day. And the management of that overall with all stakeholders, it could be more detrimental than effective. So like I said, it's a fluid plan right now that we're in. We're preparing for all three options. If we have to turn quickly, we'll be able to do that. But for right now, five weeks out, we're gearing towards a live opening.
Will our students be credited those days? Do you have to like apply to the state? Like if we were go to a distance learning, but the rest of the state is still saying, you know, in person, would we have to apply to the state so we get credit for those days? Or is it just because we're not, we're kind of different?
No, it would, we would start September 8th with whatever model we choose. Right now, we're still going on what was set by the governor and the commissioner two weeks ago. So we're planning, you know, for that to happen. We are going to repoll the parents again, probably in another week. We're gonna get the school plans up online. Mr. Williams is gonna be working with our website. It's gonna be very interactive. There's gonna be a great deal of information archived there. And then each school will have a modified bridge plan there. It's not gonna be the 40 pages for each, but they'll be able to go through parents and see about transportation, see about distancing, cleanliness, all of those things. And we're hoping that that's gonna kind of shape some of the thoughts and feelings about sending their children back. And then we'll get a real hard count for, okay, who's coming back, how many? And we'll be able to couple that with our staffing levels as well, coming back to develop that next plan.
Okay, great. I know you guys touched on this a little bit, but if we were to move to a distance learning model, it sounds like it's gonna be much different than it was in the spring. And the staff did a fabulous job in the spring with like a minute's notice. But will the students be receiving letter grades and not pass fail if we return to that?
Yes, I can tell you, I don't even have to look to Ms. Wood. It will be letter grades. There'll be a great deal more of live teaching going on in the neighborhood of 50% per class for every class during the day will be actual live interaction. So it'll look very different. So our Plan 3 is much different than Plan 2, and our Plan 2 was very effective. When we looked at neighboring districts and other districts around New England and what they were doing, and our feedback and compares, our staff did an amazing job. And for Mr. Williams, he's sitting here, but we had well over 1,000 pieces of technology out in the community on short notice. And, you know, it's never going to be perfect, but our staff really worked hard. There was a learning curve for many. We've never done this before, and kudos to them for their buy-in and our administrative team, and Ms. Wood for leading them in that charge and making sure that we were able to at least keep moving forward. Our greatest frustrations were for the students that weren't successful with distance learning. And it wasn't a model that was conducive to their learning styles. And we know that the biggest impact is on many of our needs of students. And that's personally my philosophy. There's no replication of having that live teacher with our students as frequently as we possibly can, and that's our goal for right now.
In our survey responses, that is the top request of parents. We had 1,262 parents, well, excuse me, students represented in the survey. So out of a district of approximately 1,650, 1,700, it's well over the two-thirds market. It was an exceptional response to the survey. And when asked what would help distance learning, overall, parents all said that they would like more live interaction between the teachers and their students.
Yeah, I agree with that. I have a son in high school, and he was done by like 11 o'clock every day. So it sounds like you're saying each class, they'll have like almost 50% live instruction, and then they'll have time to do whatever work they need to do, and then they'll go on to their next class. I mean, I certainly don't want my kids in front of their computer screen for eight hours a day, but that sounds like a great plan.
So if you were looking at the usual 7:30 to 2:00, and if it's a block schedule and 80-minute classes, you can expect that there were four periods that day would be a 40-minute live instructional, and then a 40-minute follow-up for routines, and then that next class a 40-minute up until that 2:00 mark, and then the day would end.
Okay, that sounds great. If a student is exposed to COVID or has to quarantine, what will distance learning look like for them while they quarantine? Is that like a live streaming thing? Or, you know, if they're not, you know, tested positive, but they're gonna, they have to quarantine at home, what would that look like?
Depending on which scenario we are addressing at the time, if it is the 100% full-time fully, it will look very similar to the students that were opting for the distance learning, whose parents are doing that. If it's the hybrid, it will be similar. We will provide that extra support for the two days that that student should be in the classroom or would normally have been in the classroom. But then what will happen is that they will access the distance learning that the 50% that aren't in school at that time are accessing. And then obviously, if it's 100% remote, and those are for students that are quarantining, obviously, if a student is sick, that's a different situation. If a student is unable to complete work because they are ill, that's a situation we'll address with families on an individual basis.
Okay. If we were to switch to a hybrid plan, the school will take into consideration families. It sounds like it's gonna be alphabetical, so you won't have to worry if you have a child at Jerome, they're gonna be on two different schedules, correct?
Right. The challenge is if you have multiple children at different levels, the last thing that a parent wants is they're one child in on Monday, the other two on Tuesday, and then it's chaos. So we're looking to do everything that we possibly can to accommodate the needs of families and working families to alleviate that stress.
Okay. Let's see. All right, so this is a tough one. What thought has been put into what will happen if a staff member dies from COVID or a parent of a student, or God forbid, a student?
You know, I think that, speaking for my 11 years here, that we do an exceptional job when we do have a tragedy. I don't think it would be any different for any other situation that we've had. I think that we're, it's a very caring community. I think we have a great support network in place. And, you know, who's to say? But I know that we'll be prepared for that, and we'll do everything we can to get not only the school community, but the family and the extended family through that. That is a tough question, because we've, since I've been here 11 years, we've lost students, we've lost faculty members, we've lost administrators, and we've rallied and supported and came out and just, you know, given so much love to those in need. And I, you know, I just hope and pray we don't have to experience that.
Thank you. I know we talked about mask breaks. Is there areas where they're gonna be taking their mask breaks? Is it gonna be in the classroom? And what will happen when students are having a really difficult time on thinking elementary schools, you know, visioning, pulling them off? How is that gonna be handled? And I realize it's gonna take a lot of instruction time away from the teachers and the staff, but parents wanted to know if there's separate areas where they're gonna be taking the mask breaks and what that's gonna look like?
I, yeah, I can jump in. I'll let Carter speak.
So I think in the elementary level, certainly, our goal is to take the mask breaks and get kids outside. So walking outside, getting fresh air, going to the playground, going for a walk behind the school, around the school, I think that's the goal. In the secondary level, that might look differently. It might be to different common areas for a mask break. I'm just, I'm not sure exactly how they're planning it. And one of the things that, at least I didn't want to do as a building administrator, was totally take up all the teachers' time and say, this is, at 10:30, you have to do a mask break. So we want to allow some flexibility by the teachers to determine when that will be. Really, the collective goal is to get them outside as much as possible. So that's for the mask breaks. Specific to what do we do if a child's struggling with the mask, or if a child's refusing to wear the mask? I mean, I really look at that as that's an educative experience. So as staff and as administrator, we have to really talk to the kids about why it's important that they wear the mask, what is the social benefit to all students, and that has to be age-appropriate. You talk to a kindergartner differently than you're gonna talk to a high school student. But that's the goal. It's not necessarily a disciplinary measure, that's not how I see it. But if it did get to that point where you have flat-out refusal, then the administrators and Scott are ready to intervene with the plan. They might ask the kid to have to go home and then consult with the family and really work on a plan, so that we understand that that's an expectation of school to keep everybody safe.
We mentioned earlier about large areas within our buildings, our gymnasiums, the cafeteria, auditorium. Our courtyards are being cleaned, and over the next five weeks will be transformed into classrooms as well. So I envision a great deal of time in those areas to have kids to be able to go out. I know that some of our buildings have purchased yoga mats and other things where kids can go and sit and spend time in separate areas around the building and outside. We're fortunate that, you know, we do have acreage on each site, and we have areas that are beautiful places for kids to go and walk and get into fields and spend some time. It's gonna look different, but I think we're ready for, you know, for that.
And with that in mind, parents, please pay attention to the kids' clothing as it gets colder out and the kids are outside more. Just remember coats and things like that, that's always a problem in general with a regular school year, but given the fact that we're gonna get the kids outside, even in the winter as much as we can, you know, keep in mind their footwear and their coats and, you know, don't send them on a t-shirt and things like that where they're gonna be outside more, because that's just gonna lead to more illness probably, and we want to avoid that at all cost.
Okay. Some parents wanted to know if their kids could wear face shields instead of masks.
The CDC recommendation for face shields, which we are going to have, staff members are gonna be wearing face shields, but if you wear a face shield, you still are expected to wear a face mask, because the face shield below is all open. So any air, any droplets, any spit, anything is possibly gonna come out on the bottom. So as much as face shields are wonderful, a teacher may be teaching more than six feet away with just a face shield on, especially for children who may need to read lips and for the younger kids who are a little bit more frightened. But if you're going to be within six feet of someone, you do need a mask. And if you have a face shield, it is recommended by the CDC that you wear both. So I would not recommend that children, children are expected to wear masks. We're not expecting a regular education student to come into school with just a face shield on. Has to be a mask. And that's why I'm asking that you start now.
With the shields, we know there's many different models of a face shield. There's the gaiters, there's bandanas, there's cloth, there's the traditional mask. So, you know, we are being flexible in what they choose.
Okay. I know you addressed the ventilation in the schools. Many parents, countless parents, are very concerned with the deteriorating high school. And I know you said you're gonna keep the classroom doors open. Are all classrooms going to be properly ventilated, or are there gonna be some classrooms that, you know, you're not gonna hold classes in because it has poor circulation? I mean, this is a big concern for parents of high school students right now.
We're looking at the second floor specifically at the high school right now. That's the area that warms up. We do have many window units, and we've accumulated them over the last several years. I don't know, I don't know if you have a spot, if you have a count of rooms that do not have window units?
Probably 15 rooms that don't have it, probably the first, and probably less on the second floor.
On the second floor.
It was driven by special needs children. That's where the air conditioning came in. That is a, that's an older building. That was an open window designed building, built in the That was an open window designed building, built in 64. So that was, that really is not an air-conditioned building. The only place that is, that has permanent air conditioning is the office. So are there spaces that have less ventilation? I would say yes, but I would say they are not teaching areas. Most of the classrooms are pretty much standard.
So we are evaluating that.
Yeah.
I think the best answer to that is that with the doors open and with the hallway units running, we're going to take a lot of outside air, bring it into the building and then recirculate that air. The, the classrooms will have windows open in the units that we do have and we're inventorying that as well. So I'm, I'm pretty confident the next five weeks, some of these second-floor classrooms will have an air-conditioning unit in them.
Okay.
You know, you started off with a 1964 building that, you know, and we, we're well aware of it. We do have a lot of dehumidifiers throughout in problem areas in the building as well. And that's just an ongoing challenge for us.
Yep. You spoke about realistically keeping the kids six feet apart and I understand in the hallways that's going to be a challenge. What parents are concerned and especially at Tocqueville Valley, some of those classrooms are very small. I realize if you take the storage things out, the teacher's desk, do you realistically think that some, I mean, that back bank of classrooms is so small? Are you really going to be able to space six feet apart for 20 to 23 students in those smaller classrooms?
We're hoping to not have over 20 students.
Right.
That's our goal.
That is our current, we have 20, so we don't have over 20 in any of the classrooms currently.
Okay.
That said, we're not going to meet the six-foot guideline in all those classrooms. Some we will, but many we will not. So it'll be more of a three or four foot.
Okay.
And that's, I mean, that's something that I'll be very clear with parents and very upfront about. That's a physical limitation of our building.
Right.
That said, the cohort model in place and really limiting it everywhere else we can and knowing that those kids are going to be grouped together with that teacher and spending time together.
Okay.
But we'll do the best that we can with our physical structure.
So we're starting with 20 at our, at our level. If X amount of kids decide to go for the second option, those numbers would obviously go down and we can balance our classrooms. If 10 kids from second, or, I shouldn't say second.
No, it's a good.
Fourth or fifth grade decide not to come back, we're going to, we're going to balance and lessen those classes by two or three students each.
Okay.
So when you take two or three students out, you're taking 18 potential feet of distancing away.
Right.
So we want all our children to come back.
Right.
That, that's our, that's our goal. But we know that, that some are going to be a little reluctant and they're going to, they're going to wait and, and transition them back in and we'll adjust accordingly.
Okay.
One thing to add to that too, because that is something I plan to share with parents is we build those plans and we know kids who are not coming back. Classroom rosters or class placements that we originally had might change and look a little bit different so that we can get to the social distancing rather than to say, well, Johnny was assigned to Mrs. DiStefano, so we have to keep him there. Well, no, we, the greater goal is to balance and get that social distancing, so that might look different.
Well, I know a neighboring town had a goal of, there are no more than 25 and then in some special areas it was high as 29. We're nowhere near that. And we're, we're proud to say that we're, you know, at a more optimal level for teaching and learning and especially in classes that are a little undersized.
A parent wanted to know if they purchased a shield for their child's desk, would they be able to take their mask off?
No.
I, I think that between what Mrs. Trillo said and the fact that we clearly cannot social distance in terms of six feet and the mask is required when you are not social distanced with six feet, that you have, children have masks on.
Yeah.
And the most effective way of containment of.
Yeah. If you sneeze and you have a shield, it's still going everywhere.
And if a kid comes behind the shield and it's, you know, so the mask is pretty straightforward.
And getting to Mrs. Trillo's point again, we can't hit that enough of just really normalizing that expectation with kids that the mask is, is how we're doing business now. So at home, getting them in that routine and going out, we're not going to your favorite store or your favorite place unless you have your mask on. So that the kids understand that's life for all of us.
Yeah. I know you explained that children will all get resourced, there'll be recess time, outdoor time. Will there be more movement breaks? I'm guessing that if you're staggering like outdoor time, it's going to be less time? I mean, I'm assuming that, but if you've got 20 classes at Jerome that need to have recess time, it's not going to be like their normal block of time. Are there going to be more kind of movement breaks for those children who won't have a full 20 to 30 minutes of recess time? Is that going to be worked into the day as well?
Yes. Our plan is to continue to give them that large chunk of recess. So the time will not look dramatically different. It might be off a little bit, but not, not noticeably different.
Okay.
That said too, we have so many more built-in transitions at the elementary level for walks to hand wash, sanitizing, the mask breaks, you know, going to specials, going to recess, going to lunch. There's a lot of those kinds of movements and transitions for kids and certainly, you know, taking brain breaks and doing movement things in the classroom is something that elementary teachers are doing as regular practice anyway. So we're mindful that we'll probably need to do more of that.
Okay. How will bathrooms be monitored? Parents are concerned about how many students are going to be allowed to go into the bathrooms at a given time and how, how, I'm thinking like middle school, each grade level has their, their floor. How is it going to be monitored that there isn't eight to 10 students in that bathroom at a given time during the day?
That's, yeah, that's something that the administration will work with their teaching staff on and they're going to have to make sure that, you know, they're being monitored. It's, it's very different for the high school.
I can highlight that for you. I mean, elementary will be doing a transition as a class with a teacher monitoring closely and allowing certain kids in and out. So that'll be pretty easy and not that different from what we've done already in elementary level. In the secondary level, they have plans in place to have teachers on duty supervising and not allowing kids into the bathroom in, in large groups. So monitoring the numbers and I think having sign-in and sign-out procedures by classroom so that they keep track of that.
Okay.
They, high school actively has hall monitors now. Their role would obviously change and it would be more towards, you know, head counts and you have to wait until the other person comes out.
Okay. With lunchtime being held in classrooms, how will food allergies be addressed?
Good question. So I think as administrators, we're communicating with the nurses, looking at our class rosters, making sure that any food allergies are addressed, that we have a plan in place, that we communicate with families about any allergies. We're, we're going to go nut-free more than likely in our school at the elementary level. I'm sure that's going to happen.
Cindy, do you want to touch on that?
Well, Dr. Welch and I, for our school specifically, have discussed that. We used a NutSafe policy last year for all classroom snacks before COVID because it used to be that nuts was just the anaphylactic allergy. Well, now there's a whole gamut of different allergies, 10 or 12 things that children are allergic to. So we always like to call it a NutSafe policy because you can never guarantee anything. We are considering being a little more stringent, even a little stricter with lunches being in the classroom. We've been discussing that and I think your building principals will give you more information on that as it gets closer. We do understand that some children only eat peanut butter. So that's why we're considering this and trying to be helpful, but please work with us. This is uncharted territory and these allergies are, are serious. They're life-threatening and we do ask that the kids who are very specific with what they eat, that you work with us. And if we have to put a plan like that in place, you know, we're asking for support. It's tough, I understand. I know that kids are fussy eaters, but snacks are working snacks in the schools normally. So we do ask that you read labels and understand that, yeah, the kids can't read them, the elementary label, and the teachers can't read 20 different packages. So that is something we're considering right now and I know that's tough, but we need to keep the kids safe.
Okay. A lot of parents, and I, I think you addressed this, but a lot of parents are concerned with the extra supports for staff and I think you guys addressed that, that you're supporting them because I know that they have concerns with returning to work with their families and stuff. One of the questions that I got was, have you surveyed the staff and teachers specifically to find out how many are planning on returning to work and do you have like a percentage of how many are planning out too?
We're over 75% right now.
75 are returning to work.
And, and we're going to re-inventory the staff similar to what we're doing with the students with the new plans at the same time. So we were about where we thought we'd be and then we'll have plans in place for those who will be either teaching remotely and maybe being a part of that plan with students who are not returning and then how we will replace them.
Okay.
So there's, yeah.
Okay. I'm guessing we're going to have a need for substitute teachers. Many substitute teachers teach at multiple schools. How will that be managed and what do you plan to do if one of them were to test positive or how do you handle substitute teachers? Is there going to be ones assigned for one building specifically, like how will that work?
We've had specific building subs in the past. We're going to look to do that. We're looking to hopefully beef up our inventory of pairs and substitutes if we're able to do that. But they'll be treated like any other staff member. If they are positive, they would be the same routine that Cindy spoke of before with, you know, monitoring, monitoring, quarantining, testing before returning.
But the substitutes won't be switching from school to new school?
We're hoping to keep them in a building.
Keeping, as in to a building?
Building specific.
The other thing to add to that Liz, we've been fortunate through the District and Tracy's office in getting interns through some of the local colleges that are, you know, doing a student teaching slash learning experience. So if each building has those people, those are assigned to our building, they're, they're great resources to us. They have been every year and I'm sure this coming year will be. They're, not only are they valuable and educated in going into the profession, but then they're assigned to the school and know our school procedures and our kids, so that's.
We're hoping they're allowed to come back in. I know that.
They are. We've received quite a few requests to be in our district. We will also, with our budget allowing, we will reach out to the universities and colleges that normally send interns to us and ask them if there's a need in our district to have additional people.
Okay, sounds good. What measures will FRC be adhering to? Will they still be offering before and after school care?
Yes. Same, it will, it will be the same, but it will look differently with the same protocols and expectations because we know parents are really heavily reliant on the ability to have pre and post-care.
Okay.
And they've kept up with their education along with us on our COVID teams, their director.
They've been involved with everything.
Very well-versed and abreast of everything we've been discussing. She's been very involved.
Yeah. One of the things too to add to that Liz is, at least, you know, Emery is really working hard to, with Beth and I at the elementary level to preserve the cohort model so to have her groups mirror kind of our homeroom groups as well. So she's thoughtfully planning that to help.
Okay. Great.
That's not your cutoff.
Is that a solo win?
You're out of time, Ms. Osgood.
Because I still got two more pages, Scott. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm trying to be brief, but.
No, people want to know.
Okay, so I got a ton of questions about medical quarantine. I realize there's HIPAA laws and there's dirty communication, but what, if a student is showing symptoms, we know that there's an area that they're, they'll go to, there's one class, I mean, there's one area in each school, but at what point do parents get notified? Is it just, and like how are you going to handle this with cold and flus season coming up? Because I'm sure Johnny's going to come home and say, so-and-so was coughing up a storm and the mother's going to be like, oh my God, you're not going to school tomorrow.
Right.
Like, how are you guys going to?
This is probably the biggest thing. Other than getting the supplies we need, this is probably the biggest thing we've been working on. I talked a lot with our medical advisor as late as 10:30 last night about how we're going to do this and we are in constant communication with East Shore Health. They've been wonderful with us and spending a lot of time. This is a bit of a work in progress, even though there are trees. I mean, we have a tree from them that says what to do if. This changes and this is going to change over the next few weeks before school starts. But just be clear that by the time these kids are back in school, there's going to be a very specific set procedure on what to do with the child or staff member who shows signs and symptoms of COVID. Now, as we all know, those symptoms mimic everything from the flu to the common cold. I think people are going to be very fastidious about getting their flu shots this year as they should be and they're going to be available in September. They're going to be available very early. So I encourage people to think about making their appointments now because if we can prevent more flu-like illness, then we can prevent more general illness and not knowing what's what. If anybody shows up with a fever of 100 degrees, no matter what, they're going to be sent home. But then you have to go through this tree, if you will, of, well, could it be COVID? We might request that you call your doctor and ask for a test, but we can't make you. We can't mandate that anybody have a test. Just, you just can't. You can't force anybody to go. So what's going to happen if somebody does come back positive? Well, then there's a whole nother algorithm, if you will, to follow. East Shore Health will be notified. We do ask that parents tell us if their child has come back positive. Our priority is to keep everyone healthy and to keep everyone's privacy. You have to be very careful because there are HIPAA laws to follow and the children need privacy as much as any adult does. So if they don't have a test done by choice or the pediatrician, the doc, or your medical doctor doesn't want one, then it's a little bit more of a system to get you back to school. You need to either return to school after you get a doctor's note for clearance because perhaps you have, the child has a fever because they have strep throat. So they'll go to the doctor, get a strep culture, it's positive, they'll be put on antibiotics and 24 hours fever-free without medication, they'll be able to come back to school. That's what we're hoping for. We're hoping for a lot of medical notes to allow kids to come back because at least they, they've been assessed. So if they do have a positive test, you know, then we run the whole gamut of them being quarantined and, but this is going to be laid out. If they have a negative test, then we're good. If their symptoms improve and they feel well and they're not on medication, they can come back. They just got a virus, hopefully. So this is a difficult part. As far as notifying people, we don't want to jump the gun. There's a lot of people who have a test that comes back positive, they get it repeated in like a day or two later and it's negative and now you've alerted everybody. Nobody, if you're not told something, then we don't know something. So just because a child comes home and says, you know, Mary who sits next to me went home today, she vomited or she had a fever, as with any normal school day, we're not going to notify everybody. We're only, we, the less information, the more important it becomes, I feel. Sometimes I feel we flood you with too much information, so we try to only give what's very pertinent. So if somebody in your child's classroom comes down with COVID, you're going to know. So please be careful about listening to rumors. Please be very careful about reading it on social media. If you have a question, call the nurse or call the administrator. Don't assume that what the child brings home is, is very accurate. Just know that we're going to do our best, that's our number one priority is to keep the kids and the staff safe. We're not going to send anybody back that we know has COVID once we're classroom.
And we're required, if there is a positive test, to notify East Shore Health that they'll do contact tracing. They've already reached out to us to assist with that process for generating class lists and when they've been in contact with, they start a whole process as well. So parents in that classroom or any connection will be contacted by East Shore.
And if the nurse suspects that somebody, a child has COVID by symptoms, they're going to be put into our isolation room. That is a room that's not located, it's not part of the actual nurse's office itself, but a separate room with a separate, you know, closed door. It will have ventilation, of course. And there will be an adult monitor in there at all times who's watching your child until you get there to pick them up. There could be more than one student in that room at a time. But don't forget, hopefully these children aren't coming into school sick because you've checked their temperatures. So it would have to be something that developed during the day. But just know there's a place that they're going to be kept. Some of them could have COVID, some of them could have not, but they're going to be kept away from the general population. That's why we're asking you to come as quickly as possible, pick them up and get them to the doctor so we can rule out that it's not.
Okay.
Because, you know, just as important is finding out that it is.
So if someone tests positive, the only people that will be notified is anybody who's in the class, anybody who's had contact. It wouldn't be a whole school?
It will not be a school-wide. No, no, no.
No. Just through the tracing, East Shore Health with who that student's been directly in contact with.
In contact with without a mask on, not within six feet.
Okay.
Right.
I'm sure all the nursing staff is.
The nurses know.
Is trending in all the wide variety of signs and symptoms.
Absolutely. Goes without saying. And they've been kept up to date all summer.
Okay. And you guys discussed the screening process. You're relying on parents to take temperatures. Is there any routine testing in the school for students? Are you, I mean, no?
No.
If a student has asthma or allergies, parents want to know, will they need to be checked or tested regularly?
I mean, that's up to the parent. Most parents who have an asthmatic child know that child very well.
Yeah.
They know from the first cough that their asthma is starting. Right now, I'm not sure if we'll be using nebulizers or not. Most districts are not because it's aerosol and it's out there. They have their mask on and it's blowing out. I haven't heard anything definite from Dr. Nofo yet, but in my experience, I meet with, online with about 25 to 30 nursing supervisors every week. And most districts have decided against nebulizers. We have not made that concrete decision yet. But most pediatricians are against it right now because it's unsafe. I guess they would be kept home if they needed a nebulizer treatment. We don't give a lot of them anyways, but typically we have that available. So it will be the regular inhaler that we're giving. And as far as them coughing from asthma, I mean, I really have a lot of faith in our parents. They know their kids here. And they know. But if we're not sure, we're going to send them home, to be clear. If we're not sure, we're not taking any chances. They're going to be asked to go home.
Okay. If we do fully reopen, will parents be expected to disclose whether or not they visit a hotspot within two weeks of old school opening? And if so, what will the schools do to follow through on ensuring that the students are quarantined for two weeks?
Question.
I'll consult with my lawyer and, you know, yes, I think that the answer is yes with.
Staff as well.
The governor, you know, has made it clear. And that would be for our teachers that, well, as well, planning to go to a hot state that requires that, that we would be made aware and given at least the opportunity to have them tested before, you know, for reentry. Many districts are going as far as saying that if you go to a hotspot and you're a staff member and you do have to quarantine for 10 days, the district isn't responsible for paying you for those 10 days. You knowingly went to a state that would require this, and now you're missing your time. So we're not at that point, but we would expect our staff to let us know and our parents and out of safety concerns.
Okay. Okay, onto busing. You guys addressed most of my busing issues, but I just want to convey that many parents are very concerned. I know you said that 40% in your survey are planning on not sending their children on the buses. And I know that in the elementary schools, it's only three grades on the buses at a time. But parents are really concerned with the middle school and high school buses. Some of those buses are at capacity. I don't know what capacity, 60 kids or whatever.
Right.
And I know you said that 40% of parents said that they're going to be driving their kids in. But on those full-capacity buses, let's say, you know, I know you talked about dispersing, you know, students in the classrooms with six feet apart. How are you going to manage?
We can't on buses. We, you know, when we met and we discussed that, without adding or running double runs, but it's just, it's not realistic for the cost of running a bus. We're adding buses, unfortunately. So we're waiting to see with this next round of questionnaires, what our bus runs will look like. And they'll be required to wear masks, masks upon getting on. The staff will have masks. And they're going to, you know, spray and clean those buses and sanitize them at least twice a day, every bus. And that's one of our biggest challenges, you know. We're going to do everything we can. You'll see a car pull up and six kids will pop out and parents drop off five or six different, you know, different kids or kids, and they're not wearing masks. And you're kind of scratching your head. We're doing a better job of distancing them and taking precautions than a lot of our, you know, parents driving kids.
Right.
So that's one of our challenges, and that's, every district is going through that.
Right. Now, this is the first I've heard of this staggered drop offs and stuff. Each school will have like, what, 10-minute increments or something?
Well, there will be a system in place. I don't think it will be 10 minutes, but, you know, it may be first bus pulls, everyone dumps and goes, takes off. The next bus pulls up to the spot, they dump and go. The next bus, so they're going to try to, you know, cut that down to make sure that we're not dumping 300 or 400 kids at the same time coming through two entry points.
Okay.
So the administrators will be charged with, you know, a systematic way to do it with the assistance of our security person to, you know, work out with Daco, what's the best way that we can get these kids in and get them off so that we're not doing it all at once.
And the building plans, Liz, and parents will include the details of what that looks like. So what the staggered times might be, how they're arranging it, how they're flowing traffic in and out. So those patterns might be different than people are used to. They might be coming in different doors.
Because keep in mind, we run a tiered system. So our earliest drop is the middle and high school, and then TBS is waiting at the stop for those buses. So we have X amount of minutes that we have to be able to get 30-plus buses in through dropping however many students are on that to start the next tier to go to Totaka Valley. Same process to then go and get, you know, our youngest ones.
Okay. How will you guys be able to address the additional parents dropping off in Carter?
Yeah.
I don't agree your job to Totaka Valley because that's a nightmare dropping off there. If we have 40% increase of parents dropping off, I mean, I drop my kids off at, I've always, I know Totaka Valley is a nightmare. It's going to be worse.
Yeah.
Try to get the buses in and out and the parents in and out. Will that be a stagger kind of thing too?
Yeah. We're only able to take a bus or two in at a time. So we are not able to take as many in as we used to, which will delay the bus traffic. And then with more parents, that traffic will be challenging too. So staggering the time should help if families really adhere to that time. If I have a third grader and my time is a little different than a fifth grader, we really ask that you try your best to adhere to that time. And we're going to have to live through it and evaluate and see how it looks and adjust accordingly.
Okay. Okay. I'm really glad to hear about the added staff for sanitizing the schools and then move on to the cleaning questions. With regards to the high school.
Tear it down.
Go back to the high school here. I'm sorry, the deteriorating high school. Parents are well aware that we don't have soap dispensers for numerous reasons. Kids knock them down and, you know, whatever. How are we going to ensure that these kids are able to keep up that hygiene during the course of a day?
There's Purell pump stations at every bathroom door. And there'll be, there'll be no electronic hand drying units in any of the buildings. So we are in the process of putting all paper dispensers in. So those will be in there, and there'll be the pump dispensers as well. So that's in every.
I was asking if it's going to be motion centered, so it's just going to be?
Well, motion centered, if we can get those. That's the greatest challenge right now is getting them. We're also going to have standalone stations throughout the building where students can come by and they'll be standing, freestanding, and they'll be able to Purell their hands throughout the building. We'll have pump gallons located at our security desks, our greeting desks, and other strategic points where kids will always have access to be able to clean their hands. We looked at the possibility of getting wet sinks and hooking up wet sinks to have additional hand washing stations. They're just hard to find. And then you get into the plumbing of putting them in, and then with spillage and everything else, is it really worth it? So these are all things that we've been talking about and looking at over the last several weeks. But we think that the bathrooms are certainly going to have enough availability for, you know, cleaning and then paper towel dispensing.
Okay.
And in regards to hand sanitizers, we've had a lot of questions from parents as to whether or not their children can bring in their own hand sanitizer, you know, like a pocket type pack. And we are going to allow that. We just ask that it is not shared, that they use their own only.
Okay. The next question is regarding the middle school and high school level. There's an awful lot of elective classes offered. How is that going to be handled, like cleaning in between classes? If someone opts to take a pottery class, you know, those classes are seeing 60 or 70 groups of kids through the day. And also, what are specials going to look like for elementary? Are we going back to our teacher pushing a cart into the classroom? Like, what is that going to look like?
So I've purchased literally hundreds of spray bottles and hundreds of cases of wipes. And every teacher, every classroom will have a cleaning station in their classroom. And we're going to ask for students to cooperate, depending upon their age, with the classroom teachers and paraprofessionals. The person that is in the building as a sanitizer will be filling those bottles throughout the day, making sure that between classes, we have the ability to spray desktops quickly, to wipe areas down, to throw into a bag, exit and leave. And that's something that, you know, is going to be part of the routine. And we've already started to implement and get those supplies into the classrooms. So we're asking our teachers to do more. We're asking our parents to do more. That person that's hired in the building will be running around and have a schedule to go into these classrooms between classes. So when you look at it, you know, six or seven-minute passing period, that person will have a schedule. Get in, spray bottles will be there, wipes will be there. But for the high school kids, I don't think it's too much to ask to say, listen, class is over in two minutes. I'm going to spray your desktop. Please wipe it down, throw it in the trash can.
And in the elementary schools, are they going to specials or are specials going to the classrooms?
So that'll be shared again in the building plans. But to answer that, at TBS, the students are going to the specials rooms. And that's going to allow us to do a quick sanitize of the rooms when the kids exit their regular homeroom. And as part of it, the sanitizer is going to visit the specials classroom during every transition. So when a class leaves, there's going to be cleaning supported by the specials teacher and the sanitizer to wipe down surfaces and clean, and then we'll get the kids back in. Again, transitioning without mixing with other kids. But we feel like it was important to get them some time again out of that classroom that they're in all day long.
Ms. Parker, serious problem, I'm sorry.
Same with you.
So they'll be attended in class?
They will be attending. They're in a lot of time in between classes to allow for presentation as well.
Okay, perfect. One of the last questions I have is, will the truancy policy be adjusted with children potentially having to quarantine for two weeks and not sending their child to school if they have a fever?
Sure. We'll have all-state guidelines on that. These are questions that are, you know, being vetted now by the State Department of Ed and their legal team. And we're certainly going to be compassionate to students who may, you know, have to exit for, you know, reasons beyond our control, and we're going to work with them. Our goal is to, you know, to provide them, if they can't be there, with the most appropriate education till we can get them back in, and we're going to be flexible. That's, I think, the key word for everything that we're talking about. Because this is just continuing to change and move, is that we're going to have to really be flexible and empathetic and compassionate to a lot of different situations.
And if they're quarantined at home, they're still going to be getting the distance learning?
Absolutely.
For those days, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're required to provide that, and we will be.
Okay. The last thing I just want to mention is many parents are asking if they could get some of the results from the surveys that you guys get, whether it's, you know, percentage of teachers that are opting out, percentage of children that are not going to be going, returning full-time and stuff like that. Parents, I think, some of them are kind of basing their decision, well, is 30% of the students not returning full-time? Or will that be information that we can share with parents?
Yeah. I think it will be more accurate after the next round. I'm hoping tonight, and I'm hoping by us presenting our reopening plans and the measures that we're taking, that we'll really have concrete numbers. So I have no problem sharing those after I get them back. I just think there'll be, there'll be better numbers than right now.
Right. That's all I got. That was quick.
That was easy. That was easy. You have questions coming in? If, I'll ask you, if you're similar to the questions that Ms. Hoskins just went through, I don't think we need to go through any, if there's anything different from what you just heard, Mr. Williams?
I've got a few.
Okay.
So there was some confusion on the busing in the beginning. There was a lot of back and forth about how they're going to load the buses.
So the buses are going to be loaded from the rear, from the back?
The first kid gets on and goes to the back.
Goes all the way to the back.
Coming from the front, back.
They go all the way to the back. And then when they depart the bus, they're going to start from the front and go off all the way to the back. So then those buses will be cleaned. The driver will have the materials. They'll have a cleaning kit onboard. And I just met with, the kid is given to each driver. There's a five cloth mask for any students who don't have masks to get on the bus. They're going to be geared with masks to give. They have disinfectant spray and wipes. They have goggles needed for them. They have hand sanitizer, and they have gloves for every driver while they're disinfecting or if they opt to drive with the gloves. So they'll adhere to all of the requirements from the CDC and with the cleaning of the buses. We're going to keep, I think, the first two seats, if we can, open, and obviously the front, and preferably the next two seats as well for buses with less capacity, just to keep distancing. It's still the highest priority is to keep the children safe as they're transporting them. It's enough of a challenge to be a bus driver now for them to have to worry about, you know, one of the students keeping their mask on while they're being transported. And, you know, just adds to that level of responsibility. So they're well aware of that.
When will the school plans be available to the public?
Next week. They're going to be finalized tomorrow. They're going to be in a modified version. The website, I was told by my webmaster, will probably be ready by next Monday. And we're hoping to have all of that information online. There'll be a banner at the top of the page and links for you to go to. There'll also be email addresses that you can send in questions to. As I mentioned before, Dr. Welch is our health and wellness safety person for the COVID team. Every district in Connecticut had to select a person to do that. So he will be the frontline with many of those communications. But they'll certainly get to me if they rise to the level that I have to be involved.
And just to clarify that one too, Bruce. So the buildings are sharing an executive summary of their plans for parents, which will have brief details. Those are going to parents tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Our website will be next week. They'll all be online by next week.
As well as the district plan. So the overall district plan, giving a little more information on three scenarios will be available by the end of next week.
If there is a COVID case, will you quarantine the whole class?
We discussed that.
Comes with siblings.
There's a protocol for that. It involves the medical advisor, East Shore Health, a tracing by East Shore Health, and then, you know, determination of where we go from there. So that's, you did speak to that. So it is pretty detailed, and it's pretty prescriptive of what will happen if, you know, because we mentioned, we're going to go into flu season. We're going to go into allergy season, and kids are going to be kids and come down with, you know, stomach aches and other things that they would, aside from this. So we're going to, you know, do what we have to do to follow protocols and processes and get kids, you know, the care that they need and.
And the bottom line is keep, if you think your child is sick, please keep them home.
Those 500 thermometers are going out for anyone in the community that doesn't have to. And it's not a bad practice to take your child's temperature every day before going to school. It's a good habit to get into. It's not one that we're used to, but we've never washed our hands 20 to 30 times before either. We've never walked around with masks on, you know, in public places before. This is a new way of doing business, and it's something that, the preventative measure for parents cooperating at home and helping us with not putting on the bus because that temperature is 101, and notifying us so that we then can be involved with the care plan is very helpful.
Can I do a mention, family members would be quarantined? So if there's a positive case in the family, we would expect siblings?
Sure, they all would be, right.
How and when do we declare to choose distance learning?
That's really based on a protocol that we get from the CEDATE or the CDC. They tell you if there is so much more activity in your town or your building.
I think they're asking.
Do you mean when a parent chooses?
Oh, I'm sorry.
How do they go about it?
So I think with our next Survey Monkey, there will be more prescriptive language towards that. If you are choosing to opt out, and then we'll have a better idea because you're going to have to put your name on there. And then we'll take that information, and then as a team, we're going to reach out to those parents and we'll start that process.
So there will be a formal process. They will have to fill out a form. We are asking again if a parent chooses to keep their child home, that they commit for a marking period of 45 days so that we don't have a transient population, both in terms of health, but as well as in terms of the actual learning for students and being able to allocate human resources appropriately. And we would ask if they are going to change their choice at that marking period that there's at least a week's notice.
There's a question about FRC shortening their hours. Are they shortening their hours?
Not that I'm aware of. We're going to have the pre and post care, and then the normal days, they will adhere to all requirements from the K-12 as well.
This question about the auditorium, are we going to rent it out to outsiders?
At this point, we're not right now. The town oversees that and does a lot in there. It's specific to capacity and with Phase 3 with the state. So if it is rented out, it would have to be per those guidelines.
What if a child can't wear a mask due to medical reasons?
That would be distanced. That child, we'd be aware of it. There would be medical notification of that child, and we would just adhere to the distancing requirements. The teacher would be aware. Anyone that comes in contact with that child, an adult in the building, that had to interact with that would be aware. We certainly don't want anyone to feel isolated if they can't wear a mask, but we just have to make sure we set up the precautionary measures to keep them distanced.
There seem to be a few questions about what does distance learning look like for the student at home?
I think Ms. Wood did speak in detail to that. That is still being vetted right now as we go through and when we know how many we are going to have to service and then with staff to service them. It's not going to look the same, per se, as what Phase 2 looked like. It's going to be, there's no pass fail, it's going to be graded, there's going to be the same learning expectations, the same assessment, the same amount of content covered, it will just be in a different model.
And obviously, if there's an opt-out distance learning, there's a difference between the opt-out distance learning and the distance learning 3.0, which would be when the whole district is shut down. And that's based on human resources.
All right. I'm good.
Ms. Hoskins, anything else come across the wire?
I do have one more question here. Parents are concerned with the added outdoor time and having the tents set up and the added security outside. Will the security guards be patrolling out there, making rounds outside as well?
So the security guards, you know, at this point, as you know, with recess, they're outside. So I think as part of their routine, there'll be less time spent at the entry point. We're not allowing any visitors or any deliveries during the day. Those doors will be locked and secured. No one will be coming in. So the point person there, the greeter, will take on any responsibilities. They have a radio. That security officer would look very different during the day, mobilizing, moving to areas outside the building. So they would be expected to be out there and around there.
Okay. That's all I have.
Great.
So we did have one question that came up quite often in terms of extracurricular activities, and parents have asked if their children are participating in the opt-out distance learning, will they participate in, on-campus extracurricular activities?
The answer is no. So if you opt out of the educational opportunities during the day, and this is under the State Department of Ed guidance, you will not be able to participate in the play or sports, those activities are considered a higher-risk activity. So the thought process is if you can participate in a sport and be in a more high-risk environment, then why can't you be in a school where we're making all of the necessary modifications? And that's for the State Department of Ed. So we will be following that. Any other comments, questions? So I'd like to thank the 359, was it the 359, Bruce? I think our highest point tonight for yours.
I have 232 comments.
Well, that went down. We were at 359 at one point. We'd like to thank you, we'd like to thank you for tuning in this evening. We will be hosting these as we move through the next five weeks. I think it's important that you access the email addresses that I sent out to you with any questions or concerns as we move forward. This is fluid, as we mentioned to start the meeting off, that, you know, we're hoping to have more information in the next week. We know that the CIC, governing body for interscholastic athletics, met today, they're